I'm not opposed to that. This is a model work for it.
But there's disabled people who get their connectability and connectability doesn't have cameras.
Parking lot is closed during school day because it's.
If there's students, if there's students using it, they wouldn't be using it during the school.
Please. It's where my kid goes.
Yes, but it's all just a problem.
It's Carden Park, not Camden. You in Baltimore?
Yes.
Call to order a meeting for the Normal Town Council for Monday, October 18th, 2021. Please call the roll.
Mayor Kuss?
Here.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Here.
Mr. Nord?
Here.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Ms. Cummings?
Here.
Mr. Preston?
Here.
Mr. McCarthy?
Here.
We'll begin with a pledge of allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have one public comment person tonight. That would be Mr. Ron Olmer. Mr. Olmer?
Thank you. I read with interest this morning, oh, Ron Olmer, a normal taxpayer. I read with interesting this morning on the new equipment scheduled for Carden Park. Can I take it off? Okay. Don't know the rules. The $180,000 project for Carden Park and it requires a $45,000 budget adjustment and the total amount will be 180,000. I talked to Mr. Hamery this afternoon and found out that the park will be more accessible to those with physical challenges, but not totally, not like the park in Bloomington, which I'm a member of organizations that contributed quite a bit of money to that, which I fully agree with. I just wanted to be clear on this would be more accessible. Then I read on in the meeting that they're going to approve $77,000 for Lucky Climate Design and the town's going to be awarded 569,000. And then we have the underpass that I don't know, 12, 14, or 17 million. My point is that in the last 51 years, Normals had three 100-year rings and many times the same houses get flooded and have sewage backup. I'm not against any of those projects I mentioned. I may not be for them either. I may be indifferent or neutral. But I think it's time that the council look at the balance between all of the nice things and all of the things that keep people from living with sewage backups every 17 years and other necessities like certain roads that are in terrible conditions. So anyway, my point is, and I think the town passed, was it 25,000 or 45,000? I get confused with Bloomington. All the $25,000 to fix the sewer, maybe 45,000. But can't we look at things more balanced between the nice things that we all say we need for this community and attracts people to this community? And then to the people who have been paying taxes for decades, receiving poor water service, poor sewer service, and poor roads at times? Thank you.
We move to the omnibus agenda items that will be considered routine will be handled with one vote unless a council member would like to pull an item for discussion. And I would point out that item C has been withdrawn. There's more work to be done on that item, so that item will not be considered tonight. Mr. Nord?
Items A, B as in boy, D as in dog, and F as in frank.
Thank you. Motion for approval?
Move approval?
Second.
Items considered under the omnibus agenda tonight are resolution to waive the formal bid process and award a contract to Game Time Care of Cunningham Associates for the purchase of modular playground unit, individual units and surfacing under the OMNIA Cooperative Purchasing Program for Carden Park. And that's in the amount of $179,963.29 and also an associated budget adjustment. Item E is a resolution authorizing the purchase of five pieces of golf maintenance equipment from MTI Distributing Incorporated for $163,425.81. Please call the roll. Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor?
I pulled item B. Or I mean, item D as in David.
Oh, I heard item B. Could you read?
It was A as in apple, B as in boy, D as in David, F as in fox.
Ms. D, all right. So we're not voting on that. We're voting on the golf course maintenance. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. Nord?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Cummings?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye. That item is approved. Item A is an approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting of October 4th, 2021. Mr. Nord?
Sure. I still move.
Second.
Mr. Nord?
Thank you. The minutes, they don't recognize that those who spoke during council comments on the removal of the Jelani Day Memorial, that they spoke at the beginning of the meeting and that I brought forward a motion to suspend or to waive the rules. I'm wondering why that wasn't included?
Actually, I don't recall you bringing a motion to waive the rules, but you asked if we could speak informally. The council agreed with it. I think that's why it wasn't in there.
Okay.
Further on this item? Please call the roll.
Mr. Nord?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Cummings?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye. The minutes are approved. Item B is a report to receive and file town of normal expenditures for payment as of October 13th, 2021. Mr. Nord?
I still move.
Second.
Mr. Nord?
Mr. Mayor? I just wouldn't state that I would like to be excused from voting on any bills related to my travel.
Mr. Nord?
Thank you. On expense page seven, there's an expense for nearly $18,000 under innovation and technology that says CDM CCTV. I'm assuming this is for CCTV is closed caption television system, like security system. Could you explain the problem that we're trying to solve by this expenditure?
We're replacing equipment that wasn't functioning. So this was a budgeted expense to replace the camera system in the museum.
Okay. And that wasn't a warranty item or anything?
No.
And then this is under IT. Since this is for the CDM, putting it under IT makes it hard in the future to see how this, well, how much it costs to operate the CDM. Why is it not falling under the CDM's accounting?
Because the Children's Discovery Museum is part of the organization that falls under the general fund and we have historically used the Innovation and Technology Department to manage enterprise-wide systems. So although this particular expense is allocated to the museum, it will be consistent with the camera system throughout the organization. So it will be the same system that goes in this building and other buildings as well. So the expense has generally been budgeted by the Technology Department because they manage that system.
Okay. Personally, whenever I look at expenses, my litmus test is if we didn't have the CDM, would this expense be reasonable to apply towards this budget bucket? And, you know, if we didn't have the CDM, we wouldn't have this nearly $18,000 expense because it's the security TVs for them, correct?
In this particular instance, I would tell you that if the expense didn't happen here, it would be going to another facility because we have scheduled changing out all of our camera system.
Okay. I, well, the expense has already happened. I would, in the future, like to see it allocated to the CDM if it is strictly for the CDM. And then another budget item on expense report two, there's an expense under city manager expense. It's a 23, over $23,000 expense for remediation. I've been given a little bit of information as to what this is. You know, I've been told that this is to remediate a hazardous situation or a council member has said this was to remediate a health issue and that this is an investment that the taxpayers are putting into a private owner property, that we will get that investment back whenever that property sells. Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes.
Okay. This just kind of strikes me as odd because taxpayers, we don't collect taxes to invest in private properties. And it brings up all kinds of questions as to why we're investing in this property, what qualifies for the town to invest and give, you know, I don't know if this is a zero-interest loan or how all that works, but that's not the role of the town. You know, if there's some other issue, you know, if it's a health issue, this should have gone through the Health Department. If it requires, say, like a social services issue, you know, there's other programs out there, not the town. So without getting into the reasons, I just disagree because it puts you in the position of deciding who gets this and who doesn't get this without a council policy defining that.
Mr. Nord, I will point out that that is within her spending capacity as city manager by ordinance. She's allowed to make decisions up to $25,000. She explained to you in an email earlier today what was going on. I know you wanted to make this public tonight, but that's certainly well within her responsibilities to do that.
Well, actually, in that email, it didn't explain exactly what was going on. It said that she wanted to keep it out of the email, so I don't know the reason why. And as I said, I disagree with the expense.
We're going to move on here because this is within her spending authority and you could visit with Ms. Reese after the meeting and get that answered. Further on this item?
No.
Mr. McCarthy? You were looking that way, but you had your finger up.
Yeah. Just waiting my turn, just being patient. A little bit on this item, sensitive nature. I read the email was pretty clear. Mrs. Reese's explanation, and I know that we council in our two-on-one meetings met with Ms. Reese on this. Not sure if you were not part of those, Mr. Nord, or wasn't able to be part of those. But so this was a, using the term invest and remediate in the same sentence is a little oppositional. So remedying in a problem that's a code violation isn't about the Health Department, it's about the town of Normal. And so it's well within certainly the spending authority, but let's be clear about why this isn't the Health Department thing. It's not a county Health Department issue. It's a town of Normal code issue. And so it was handled under our Code Department and which is good and appropriate and why we have a Code Department and why there's code in the town. And it was a health issue, a health hazard, frankly. And again, it was explained to all of us in meetings with Ms. Reese. She explained this in detail. And so if you didn't attend those meetings, maybe you can get with Ms. Reese and get those details, Mr. Nord. But certainly this would be an inappropriate thing for any other unit of government besides the town of Normal because it's a town of Normal code issue.
Please call the roll.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Cummings?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. Nord?
No.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye. The expenditures are received and filed. Item D is a resolution to waive the formal bidding process and award a contract to Game Time Care of Cunningham Associates for the purchase of modular playground equipment, individual units and surfacing under the OMNIA Cooperative Purchasing Program. This is for Carden Park in the amount of $179,963.29 and also an associated budget adjustment. Mr. Nord?
I still move.
Second.
Mr. Nord?
Thank you. The write-up says that we're doing this to avoid a potential, or we are speeding this up because this isn't budgeted for next year. But we're doing this this year to avoid a price increase. And this was not bid out. How do we know that other vendors wouldn't offer this at a lower rate as budgeted in the future?
Well, Mr. Nord, we typically, when we replace playground equipment, we usually acquire the equipment in the fall. And so this is not out of the ordinary in terms of timing to order our equipment, but this is being acquired through the joint purchasing program, which our experience is joint purchasing offers the best pricing. So that is what we're asking for. If you look at the assessment that's included in the council action report, what's driving this over budget is the poured-in-place surface, not the playground equipment.
Okay. Then the write-up says that there's going to be an increase coming. Why are we doing this early then, a year early if it's not the increase that's coming and if it's the poured-in-place concrete that's causing us to do this early?
Well, we're telling you the price increase on the playground equipment is expected to occur January 1st. So we know the price is going up. The equipment price is going to go up. So we're asking council to let us buy the equipment now before the price goes up, which would be within budget. What's driving this over budget is the surface to make this more accessible.
Okay.
So we can wait until next year if that's what council would prefer, but then we know the prices will go up.
Yeah. Well, I had emailed you earlier to find out if there were other companies that offered this equipment and you said that there were.
You asked if there were other playground equipment providers and that is yes. We use game time in our parks.
Okay. The write-up says that we use some other providers as well, that in most of our parks it's game time.
There's, I believe, one piece, one climbing piece at One Normal Plaza that's Little Tykes piece or something like that, but all of our parks are game time and that's what we are trained to install.
Okay. And then this park, I had brought this up at the public hearing whenever Parks and Rec was talking about this. This park, it doesn't have bus access. Connect Transit does not serve that area unless you take the mobility service. So this is a park that, you know, is probably one of the least accessible buses for the general public to get to. And, you know, I brought that up as a concern. And could you just clarify, because I think I got this from park staff, that going forward, we're going to be making these parks kind of in this accessible model? And it just so happens that with the timing, this is the oldest park that was scheduled to be upgraded? Could you confirm if that's, if my understanding's clear on that?
I will try to confirm if I understand the question. We replace playground equipment as needed and it's planned for. We know the condition of all of our playground equipment in all of our parks. This is the most, this is the first playground to be replaced since we've talked with the students last spring about trying to make our playgrounds more accessible. This is being replaced because of its age and its condition. Where our playgrounds fall on a connect transit bus route, I can't respond to that. I haven't checked Connect Transit's routes. But I can say that as we prepare to replace our playground equipment, as we discussed in the spring with the Grove Elementary students, it is our intention to start planning for more accessible access, more accessible playground experiences in all of our playgrounds. So we will start incorporating this poured-in-place surface as much as possible. With that being said, if someone, a young person or a grandparent or a parent or any family member has accessibility issues, if they want to experience our parks, they are able to use, as Ms. Smith mentioned earlier, they are able to utilize Connect Transit's connect mobility system. And the beautiful thing about that is the price to use connect mobility is the same as a fixed route.
Sure. Just this park, this happens to be the park that my son goes to. I live right by it, so I know it intimately. The access to it during the school day sometimes is blocked off because kids are going out there to play recess, you know, and they don't want folks driving through the parking lot, which is where the kids have to go. So this, you know, normally I would say if we're setting priority, this one is probably the least accessible for the general public. But going forward, if this is our design, and I understand that this just happens to be the oldest one, I support it for that reason and I hope that the parks that come forward will be built in a similar, more accessible manner.
Ms. Smith?
I strongly support this renovation and I don't see that it's an issue that the park is not accessible during school hours when the nearby school is in session because children with disabilities are also in school during those hours. And as for access to the park, minor children, even children over 18, oftentimes have to have an adult with them. And families with disabled individuals are very accustomed to having customized vans to transport their loved ones. And rather than having to segregate which parks they can use, I think it's wonderful that we're making this effort to make this move in a park with that poured surface. Wheelchairs can be particularly problematic on specific surfaces. And to have this and to see some of the playground equipment where even someone in a wheelchair can be transported into the play space and swings that will accommodate them if they don't have the core body strength to sit upright. I think this is completely awesome and I'm totally in support of this. And I recognize that the cost overrun from that poured surface is driving some of this need for a budget adjustment, but I really believe that it's an investment that all of our citizens are deserving of.
Ms. Cummings?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to certainly say that I have to bring this up because we also had comments on this and I feel we miss great opportunities when we started counting pennies. We promised some students who brought up serious concerns about accessibility for all at our parks in our recreation facilities. And if this is the first park, one due to the age, I think it's a great opportunity to begin. Whether we do it now or wait till later, to me, that's a way of trying to find a negative, even in the midst of a positive. And I think we need to stop that and focus on the positive, which is let's begin to be a community who focuses on ADA accommodation, which makes for inclusivity for all in our community, if we are true about wanting to be in an inclusive community. Understanding that we have an opportunity now, even though we may have to pay a little bit more for the surface, but getting what in the long run would be the higher cost, the equipment at a lower cost now, that's also an opportunity to take and take a hold of. I'm actually excited about this, one, because we promised those students that this was something we were going to do and we're doing it. And I am so glad that we are showing what we say we are. We say we are an all-inclusive community and we're trying our best to make it an inclusive community, even in something as small as upgrading our parks for ADA accommodations. I apologize about that. So this is a great opportunity and I am so in support of it. I'm not for counting the pennies in this moment when we know, one, that there's a need to upgrade, but for, two, to have the opportunity to upgrade and be cognizant of inclusivity.
I'm going to caution going forward to not turn this into a discussion on policy having to do with accessibility in our park system. So let's kind of back it up a little bit, if we would. Mr. Preston?
Thanks, Mayor. I am glad that a point was made by my colleague, Ms. Cummings, a second ago, and it was what I was wanting to make sure didn't get lost in all of this. So let me echo that now. As was mentioned and Ms. Reese had mentioned briefly, and it was also in our council packet, this item tonight takes me back to a meeting earlier this year in which a class of elementary students at Grove came and spoke to us about their desire and their enthusiasm for seeing inclusive, accessible playgrounds in the town of Normal. I love the idea that a class of the next generation of our communities and, you know, of our state and our country are getting involved. And, you know, it's nice when every once in a while they can bring forth an issue and actually government can respond and get things done. You know, that's a positive that probably doesn't happen near as much across the board as it should. So this, I do, this is something my late mother, whom I think about all the time, she devoted her life to a population that was underserved and that had physical and developmental abilities that this kind of thing would serve. So it's personal to me in that sense as well, and I think it's a great opportunity for us here. And I want to thank and congratulate the class that spoke to us earlier this year and seeing this, you know, be a first step in addressing something that was important to them. Thanks.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yeah, I'll just briefly echo. I'm glad these points were made of, we heard and we're acting. And it's a great story. Like Mr. Preston's mom, my wife is an early learning special education teacher. And ironically, two weekends ago up in Madison, Wisconsin, we were on a version of this exact playground with this zero-depth surface. And when your 21-month-old grandson twins fall off the bars and land on the surface and don't hurt themselves, you start to appreciate why these things are being put in place. And when you see a special needs child on the playground being able to access, easily step up onto this equipment, you start to get it in a real hurry. So if you haven't seen it or haven't seen folks who have mobility challenges or accessibility challenges, I know, Mayor, I'm wading in just a little bit, but it's really great and it's a wonderful thing we're doing. As far as the accessibility, I do want to remind everybody, or the park and its use and accessibility, I do want to remind everybody of the information from the packet that this playground is located adjacent to Prairie Island Elementary School and is one of the most used playgrounds in our system. So it would seem to me that staff's probably picking a good option for a playground since it's one of our most used playgrounds in the system. And spending a fair amount of time in that area, I know that there's sidewalk access from the neighborhood adjacent to it. There's also sidewalk access to beach, which doesn't really limit anything. Certainly going from Rab Road through the school property would be limited during the day, but there's plenty of access outside the public thoroughfares to get to the park. So really thrilled. Thanks for helping us follow through on this, certainly to Parks and Rec staff and senior administration.
Mrs. Lorenz?
All right. I'm going to focus more on the playground itself and just remind ourselves that, and this speaks to- that, and this speaks to our public commenter, to Mr. Ulmer, the concern that he raised. Our parks are important, and the safety and upkeep, particularly of that equipment, is important as well. Things change, new safety techniques, you know, design ideas come into play, and that park was a place where my son and daughter played quite a bit when they were little. Tonight, today, my son turns 26. I don't think it's probably in very good shape after 26, Midwestern, spring, summers, and winters, and falls. So it's probably had its useful life, and I commend our Parks and Rec Department and our town in general for maintaining our parks and doing that on a scheduled basis. And the fact that we are also incorporating this other policy change for accessibility, I think speaks to good policy of our town. So thank you to Parks and Rec. And I told my son I was going to work in his birthday somehow.
Further on this item? Please call a roll.
Ms. Cummings?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. Nord?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye. The resolution is approved. Item F is an ordinance amending the liquor code concerning liquor commission meetings. Mr. Nord?
I saw a move.
Second.
Mr. Nord?
A question for staff. At the liquor code, or at the liquor commission meetings, is there public comment?
Yes.
Okay. I understand that we may not need these meetings all the time, but this is another opportunity for the public to comment and provide public comment. Without this being a scheduled meeting, the only way for us to call a meeting would be for four council members to get together and call it, you know, if the mayor and town manager wouldn't. So we've had this happen before. I mean, we start our meetings, what, five minutes earlier, whenever we don't have anything to talk about? So I think if we vote to change this, we're going to remove the ability for concerned citizens to speak to us. And just out of that, I don't want to make it harder for our constituents to address their government. So that's why I can't support this.
Well, I would say that, just to add some flesh to that, 20 years, no one's ever spoken at a public comment in a liquor commission meeting, and they have the right to speak about anything at every meeting.
If we're going to discuss, the only way they could speak to us at a council meeting on something that's not on the agenda is to wait possibly several hours and speak at the end.
Well, if they're waiting several hours, that's our fault.
Ms. Smith?
I just wanted to point out, as you just did, Mayor, that per Mr. Nord's motion a year ago, citizens are able to speak on any topic at council meetings. There is email, and there are other forms of communication. So to assert that we are taking away something that the liquor commissioner, who has served in that capacity, is informing us, there hasn't been utilized, I fail to see that that is problematic.
Mr. McCarthy?
Thank you, Mayor. I certainly agree. There's, you know, there's ample opportunity to speak publicly or communicate with us one-on-one or one in a group, so I don't find that any bit of dissuasion or hurdles for communication with our public. I do want to make sure that it hasn't been mentioned that, just like this issue is on our agenda tonight, if we're doing anything with the liquor code, it's got to come before the public and vote, and people can come up and chat with us. So, you know, we write liquor code, we do liquor licenses, and we deal with those who have problems following the rules of their liquor license. All three of those things involve a meeting, and at any time we have a meeting, anybody can come and speak. So there's really no limitation. If there's any of those things going on with the liquor commission, there will be a public meeting, just like there is today, and it'll be on our agenda, and anybody can speak. So I'm in favor of it. Thanks.
I understand your intent, but I was going to, go ahead.
Sorry. The last thing, I guess, is, you know, local governments, all governments, get criticized for wasteful spending and inefficiency, and we should act more like business. And I got to be honest, you know, I don't really agree, as a business, small business owner, that government is like business. But from an efficiency perspective, why would you schedule a meeting you know you're going to cancel, to bring everybody together, to bang a gavel and say, "Just kidding, we don't have anything to talk about"? That doesn't make any sense. We're defaulting of spending taxpayer dollars and staff time, rather than schedule a meeting when we actually have business to conduct. So the default is schedule when we have something to talk about, rather than default and take up staff time to say, "We don't really have anything to talk about." That just never made any sense to me as a business owner, and doesn't make any sense to me today. Thanks, Mr. Preston.
And just for clarity, what drove this issue is, we have four scheduled meetings a year, and some years, three of those meetings are called to order and adjournment. And so that's kind of what drove this request to do this. Further on this item?
Please call a roll.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. Nord?
No.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Cummings?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye. The item is approved. We move to general orders, and we have three items on general orders all tied to the same project. The first is a resolution approving the second amendment to the annexation agreement for the Trails on Sunset Lake subdivision at the northeast corner of Airport Road and Fort Jesse.
Move approval?
Second.
Is there discussion on this item? Mr. Nord?
Just for clarification, we've got three items on this. We're not voting on all three of these at once?
Oh, no, no. We'll vote them individually.
Please call a roll.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. Nord?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Cummings?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye. The resolution is approved. Item eight is an ordinance rezoning property in the town of Normal, having to do again with the Trails on Sunset Lake subdivision.
So move? Second.
Thank you. Discussion on this item?
Just to clarify, this rezoning is simply, this one parcel was never switched from agricultural to residential, and that's all this item eight is addressing, correct? Okay. That's it?
Yes.
Please call a roll.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. Nord?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Cummings?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye. The ordinance is approved. Item nine is a resolution approving an amended subdivision plan for the Trails on Sunset Lake subdivision.
Move approval?
Second.
Discussion on this item? Mr. Nord?
Thank you. This is very similar to the annexation that we had last council meeting. This is a map of the Phoenix development, which you can see here in white. This was not shown as being in a sewer tap-on area. The hashed area, this is the tap-on area. Staff came to us and told us that because it was not in this hashed area, that they were not going to charge them a sewer tap-on fee. At the last council meeting, when I brought this up, Ms. Reese said, "Well, because the agreement that was before us' last council meeting said in the agreement that it was required." Well, the Phoenix property, it specifically gave a dollar amount that was due for sewer tap-on fee. I mean, specific dollars per acre. And yet, staff interpreted the ordinance that a council before us that agreed to that annexation agreement, they just ignored them. The staff said, you know, "Hey, we're going to interpret this differently and not charge them anything." So now, we come to this agreement that's before us today. This happens to be the same map. What we talked about last time was at the north end. Now we're at the south end of it. Again, it's completely in the white, just as the North Town property was. And we're charging them a sanitary sewer tap-on fee. The annexation agreement for this doesn't say exactly how many dollars. So my question is, is, well, my question for staff, which I asked this earlier, is how much are we charging them? We're charging them the amount of money as if it were hashed, as if it were in the sanitary sewer tap-on fee map. So, you know, for developers, they just want an even playing field, you know, the rules to be consistent across the board. And yet, they're not. So, you know, I am confused as to when we charge tap-on fees. Is it based on the annexation agreement? Is it based on the map? You know, what is it based on? So, you know, the council, we do not choose what this dollar amount is. The council before us adopted these ordinances, and, you know, our job is simply to agree to the annexation agreement, and staff then interpret and charge essentially what they want. So I am for this development, but Ms. Reese, I would like at some point for some clarity to be brought forward, so developers know if they're going to get charged an annexation fee or not.
Mr. Nord, we've been over this multiple times, and it's been explained to you. I would suggest you meet with staff again and try to get clarification. I know you're having difficulty getting that. But Ms. Reese, if you would, address why we're doing a tap-on fee. I think that's an appropriate question.
Sure. And I also indicate, I'm certainly unaware of any developer who's confused, because we meet with developers nearly weekly, went from concept to filing about their potential development. So I don't know of anyone who's confused. So if you know people who are confused about what they might have to pay, please send them my way. That's part of our kind of really focused conversations we have with all prospective developers, so they know in advance what to expect. So to hear that someone's confused is a little bit of a surprise. In regard to the sewer tap-on fee, every time we have a site plan brought to you and you ask the same question, very consistent about that, and I respond with what the fee will be charged, or if no fee will be charged. In this particular instance, I probably will ask Ms. Davidson to come forward, because if there's additional questions about this development, she can certainly answer them. But the project that was on council's previous agenda was charged fees in accordance with the annexation agreement. And I shared that with you, in terms of the annexation agreement, and how it had been applied from the time that subdivision had been annexed. And that particular issue was the vineyards. In this particular instance, this is Trails at Sunset Lake, so we are applying the annexation agreement the same way it's been applied for all the previous additions and final plats of that subdivision. Mr. Day, do you want to jump in and offer anything specific? And Ms. Davidson? So, I mean, we're being very consistent with how we apply fees in accordance with the annexation agreement. So I'm not sure of the confusion. Anybody have anything to offer or add? So I'm sorry if I'm not answering the questions you have. I don't know what more we can offer to you.
Okay. I mean, my question isn't why this one's being, it's why was the North Town property, when the annexation agreement spelled out an exact dollar amount?
We're not going to talk about the North Town property. Mr. Nord, you're out of order. Mr. Nord, you're out of order. We're not talking about the North Town property. We're talking about Trails at Sunset Lake.
I don't have any questions for that one.
Further on this item? Please call a roll.
Mr. Nord?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Cummings?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye. The resolution is approved. We have one item of new business, and that is a motion to approve appointments to the Planning Commission. The appointments are Mr. Jay Tumala and Mr. Andy Byers.
Move approval?
Second.
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Nord?
When was the public notified as to who the appointees were?
Right now.
Okay. So my concern is the public just found out right now. Public doesn't have a chance to provide public comment for us to hear from the people we So nothing against the folks that have been appointed, I just think that we owe it to our constituents to give them a chance to speak.
Ms. Cummings?
This has come up several times, and I need to, I feel like as being a political scientist, because that is what my degree is in, I need to bring some textbook information to this body and to those who are watching. One of the duties of a mayor, whether you are in a strong mayoral form of government or a council, city manager form of government, regardless of the either one, the mayor's authority is to select those who shall sit on boards and commissions, and our town is no different. What's slightly different is that the mayor does kind of bring it forth and puts it on the agenda. And, one, it is to bring some level of transparency to who we are bringing into boards and commissions, as well as allowing the council to see. That is something that this body has done. But the authority of a mayor, whether they are a strong mayor, or whether it is city council, excuse me, council, city manager form of government, the mayor does have authority to select those who are going to be on boards and commissions. I ask that we be respectful of that process and that positioning.
Mr. Nord?
Thank you. The reason I bring this up is because Bloomington, our neighbor, their process is different, where they let the public know ahead of time. And our role is to, I mean, I respectfully disagree with your synopsis of it, but the mayor picks the person, we approve that. So, you know, it seems like we're being asked to rubber stamp without letting the public decide. And if this council wants to say, "Hey, the council doesn't approve," then let's change the code to simply say, "The mayor appoints without the approval process of the council." I mean, I'm just asking to follow the ordinance.
Well, I think it's incumbent on you, Mr. Nord, to get the council to agree with you on that change. Further on this item? Please call a roll.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Cummings?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. Nord?
No.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye. The appointments are approved. Mr. McCarthy, if you would, give us some background on the appointees.
Happy to, Mayor. We have Mr. Jay Tumala, I hope I got that right. Is a mechanical engineer by trade, moved to the U.S. 20-some years ago, has an information systems job career. He's been here in the town for over 15 years, and works with one of our wonderful bedrock companies, State Farm Insurance. And he's been involved in project management, several other areas there. He's a graduate of the multicultural leadership program here in town. He volunteered for the community healthcare clinic, doing feasibility study and bringing dental health care for our local community, which is a sorely needed service, if you're not familiar with our healthcare clinic. He's married, and has a daughter, who's a junior at ISU, and a son, who's a freshman at Normal Community High School. He's got quite a volunteer resume here. I won't read it all, but the Telugu Association, the Ecology Action Center, 48 and 48 BLM, which helps nonprofits with websites for a better tomorrow, Parklands Foundation, Police and Minority Partnership. Wow. Last... Partnership. Wow. Lots of, lots of volunteer service here in the community. He'll be leaving his role as the co-chair of the Human Relations Commission to join the Planning Commission, and we welcome you. Second is Mr. Andy Byers. Mr. Byers moved to Normal in 2015 to attend ISU to be a Spanish teacher. And fortunately, the town of Normal convinced him to stay, and he convinced his fiancee to stay. And he's fallen in love with the community and the culture, and, and wouldn't imagine living anywhere else. He works for a public affairs firm, and specializes in renewable energy development, which is pretty cool. And they help guide wind and solar farm developers across the Midwest in various aspects of developing projects, which gives Andy a lot of insight into how boards and commissions and local governments work. He and his fiancee live together with their, I don't know what a Malte Poo is, I'm assuming it's a dog, buddy. And, and they enjoy living close to the Constitution Trail and for quick puppy walks and ice cream. And we welcome Mr. Byers as well.
Thank you. We're going to move on then to public comment. We have one public commenter, Gavin Cunningham. And Mr. Cunningham, just for process, ask you to state your name for the record, and you have three minutes of public comment.
Awesome. Do you need my name spelled too, or just stated?
Please.
Gavin Cunningham, G-A-V-I-N-C-U-N-N-I-N-G-H-A-M. Thank you. I was at the last, the last council meeting, where people came in and spoke about the mural that was torn down, that was put up of Jelani Day. I think that it is extremely important that some facts come to surface with what happened in that situation. I've spoken to a couple of people who are close to the Day family, who have confirmed that Jelani's, Jelani Day's family was not alerted before the mural was torn down. Jelani Day's mother, Carmen, had posted on both Instagram and Facebook, and had expressed with friends and family how happy she was that a mural was constructed of her son. The community needs something to mourn the loss of Jelani Day. And that mural was something that represented a student who this community lost, who was going to be a doctor, and had already left his mark in this community. I'm approaching the council not out of rage or anger, but asking that a new mural be painted of Jelani Day, so that his memory can forever live in Normal for the next generation of ISU students and Normal residents. Also, I think it's extremely important to note that at the last meeting, it seemed as though whenever someone brought up race, or said the word black, the rest of the city council turned and looked at Councilwoman Cummings. And it seems as though if Councilwoman Cummings is the only one who knows how to fix these issues, that maybe she should be the one leading this town. I think it's important to note that students are important, students have votes, and we will be voting the next time your seats are up for election. Thank you.
Before taking a motion for adjournment, are there concerns or comments? Ms. Cummings?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I do have a couple things to note. I'm not going to rehash some of this other stuff from tonight. I do want to share that we had our kickoff weekend for Youth on a Mission. We had our retreat this weekend. And we will be sharing the students that had that opportunity this past weekend. And let me pause my comments. Before you all leave, don't go just yet, because I have something for you as well. So, hold on. And it was a great opportunity. And so I'm looking forward to you all getting to know our Youth on a Mission Council, and getting to know those bright young students out of the Unified School District system. I kind of want to slightly go over some things, just because hearing the comments, I, I know we typically don't address public commenters, but I want to kind of speak on a few things. One, I believe that the sentiments of what has happened, you know, continues to sit with many of us. And so it's not missed. What, and I want to share, and I don't know if it's okay, I, I have actually also reached out to his mom, who was okay with, and was delighted to be able to receive that as a gift, which was placed on there. It was not literally a mural in a sense of something being painted onto something. It was more of a graphic arts design that had been attached to plywood. And so we did make sure that it was preserved, and something that she could keep to memorialize. Another thing to take note of is that, yes, Jelani was an ISU student, but not a Normal resident. What I would like to encourage, because currently the town of Normal does not have quote-unquote "public art spaces," which is something maybe can be discussed in the future, but I think also working with possibly the university, because I know the university, I believe, if I'm correct from what I've heard in the past, that there are public art spaces to be able to create public art. And so maybe there can be some additional conversations between, you know, us to, to identify that, because he was an ISU student more so than a Normal resident. He was actually a resident of Bloomington. But I understand the sentiment, and when you have a connection, you go to class with someone, you've seen them, you've encountered them, and how, though, and be so sudden, those things can play a role in how, in your emotions, and how to address things. So we want to make sure that we are addressing things appropriately, but also hearing your concerns, addressing your, your grief, because that's what was a part of it, addressing your grief as well, as a community, ISU community. So there are ways to do that, and we want to address that as best as we can. So there is some, some connection we can have. And I'm hoping that that can be resolved. My other comment is, you know, I was looking forward to the CDM item tonight, but we look forward to bringing that in the future. They are under our, oh, let me get the, the correct name for the department, because it's not CDM, it's Cultural Arts. Thank you. They are a part of us. They, their day-to-day operations is a part of the town. Our community is also invested, not in just the basic necessities, but we also do some investment in the quality of life for our community, hence what we do for Parks and Recreation and Cultural Arts. And so I want us to keep that in mind as we move forward, and not only into some of tonight's decision-making, but as things go forward. While there is a board that assists with the exhibits and paying for those, a lot of the day-to-day is still with under the town of Normal. I do want to hint on one other thing, because I didn't want to beat a dead horse when it came up, but I think back to when I was a child, and there was a home, which was a health issue in our community, and the city chose to do nothing. And for months, I will never forget this, because we were a poor community, a poorer community, we had to figure out how to deal with a mice infestation, because they let a house that had been pretty much a hoarder at the lower level, and the upstairs level, basically, there were people just parking in there, mostly drug addicts. And the city done, had done nothing. And for those of us who were working families, and we were, you know, paying our rent and trying to make ends meet, and some of our landlords were decent, and some of them didn't care, they just wanted to collect the rent, we had to figure out what were we going to do to deal with this mice infestation. Eventually, after enough complaining, they tore the house down, which it didn't necessarily help the situation, because if you know about any of that, it just made, it just forced the mice that were in there to find another place. I say all that to say, the decision we made tonight was a community health issue, because it could have been bigger or worse than anything. And I applaud our community for having the wherewithal to address these types of issues, so that they don't impact the community at a larger scale. That's all I have for tonight.
Ms. Smith?
On a lighter note, a reminder that the Haunted Trail is back for this year, after having to convert to a drive-through experience last year. It will be individuals actually walking through the trail, as has been the custom. This weekend is the Not So Scary Weekend for families with small children. Next weekend is attuned to more, people who are more comfortable getting scared. There will be candy given out at the end of the walk. There will be, the Parks and Rec building is open, so there still will be some activities in there, not the face painting, but as much as possible, trying to restore a very beloved fall tradition. And please be mindful of spacing yourself. I know the lines do start to get very long very early, but please avoid crowding, because there, there won't be any circles put on the trail, demarking six feet distance or three feet distance, and just be aware of that, and take personal responsibility for that. And everybody, I hope, has a wonderful time to see this back.
Further? Comments? Motion for, oh, Mr. McCarthy?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of other things I wanted to point out. In addition to the Haunted Trail, we have a number of holiday season things coming up. Treat Feast in Uptown is just around the corner. And if you're not familiar with Treat Feast, it's, goes on in Uptown, and it's a free, family-friendly event in Uptown. Candy central from about five to six thirty. It's, there's a lot of candy, a lot of kids going around all the stores in Uptown. It's a real funny evening. That is on Thursday, October 28. And then on the 29th is the Halloween Hoopla at the CDM. And that's trick-or-treating in the exhibits. And it's a spooktacular theme. I had to say that, get that marketing word out, spooktacular. I haven't seen that one before. But that's also on the 29th. And then, just a reminder, I actually got a couple of questions about this this weekend, is that in the town of Normal, town-wide trick-or-treat is five to eight PM on Sunday, October 31st. The official day in the town of Normal is, again, Sunday, October 31st, five to eight PM. So if you're going out with your kids, that's the time in the town of Normal.
Further? Mr. Preston?
Yeah, I'll be short and sweet. I just want to recognize and congratulate our wonderful institution, Illinois State, for their homecoming. That was this past weekend. It was their hundredth homecoming for ISU, and I think there was probably a lot of enthusiasm for the fact that not only was it their hundredth, but it was also their first one in a couple of years. As last year, it was just virtual, nothing in person. And the year prior, if I recall correctly, the weather was pretty poor, that I think there were a lot of people who were looking forward to this weekend, and a lot of people put a tremendous amount of work into it. So congrats to ISU. It was a great time.
Further? Motion for adjournment?
So moved. Second.
Please call the roll.
Ms. Cummings?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. Nord?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye. We are adjourned.